I would like to call the August 27, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting to order. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Parker? Whackler?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda is presented.
Second please. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Ordinance 2025-023, amending the Soldatna Municipal Code, SMC Sections 1710-215, 1710-400, and 1710-420, to establish an interim regulatory process for newly annexed areas, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on September 10. Ordinance 2025-024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $143,773 in the utility fund and the utility system capital improvement improvements fund, and authorizing the city manager to execute sole source contract contracts with Neuros in the amount of $125,020 for the wastewater treatment plant blower core overhaul project, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on September 10. Ordinance 2025-025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $46,116.62 in the general fund and $46,116.62 in the debit service fund for debt service on the Fieldhouse Bond Anticipation Note, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on September 10. Ordinance 2025-026, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $71,109 in the general fund due to the ratification of a new collective bargaining agreement with members of the Public Safety Employee Association, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on September 10. Ordinance 2025-027, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $3,200 in the general fund for a donation received from the Soldatna Library Friends, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on September 10. Ordinance 2025-028, accepting grant funds from the Washington Education Telecommunication Association and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $750 in the general fund for the American Revolutionary Documentary Mini Grant, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on September 10. Ordinance 2025-029, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $500 in the general fund for a donation received from the Soldatna Rotary Club, sponsored by the city manager, hearing on September 10. Resolution 2025-030, adopting the FY 2026 and FY 2027 City of Soldatna Pay Plan and authorized personnel staffing table, sponsored by the city manager. Action Memorandum 2025-014, determining the FY 26 Cycle Cycle 1 Mini Grant Awards, sponsored by the city clerk, and that is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any item just right by the city clerk? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any of those consent agenda items? Seeing no one, we'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. Are there any objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing and hearing no objections, the agenda and consent agenda are approved by unanimous consent. And you will notice on there that all those public hearings on September 10, I won't be here. Mayor, Vice Mayor Parker gets to do it. So, next item on the agenda I have is a proclamation for Hunger Action Month. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and the city of Soldatna, and whereas the city of Soldatna is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that citizens of the city need. And whereas the city of Soldatna is committed to working with the Kenai Peninsula Food Bank and educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources to and attention to hunger issues. And whereas 25,000 individuals on the Kenai Peninsula rely on food provided by the members of the Kenai Peninsula Food Bank annually. And whereas the Kenai Peninsula Food Bank distributed more than 1.44 million pounds of food in 2024 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas the Kenai Peninsula Food Bank will launch a campaign throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement and efforts and to end hunger in our local community. Now therefore, I Paul Whitney, Mayor of the city of Soldatna, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in the city of Soldatna, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Thank you for all and everything you guys do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Somebody wants to take a picture? Too many cameras around. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is number four. Public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none here, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough and/or the state legislature that would like to address the council?
Thank you, Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly, Stotanis seat. I don't think I came in, I'm starting to remember if I came in and talked to you guys about any of the propositions as the final. I don't think that I did the final yet. So I was going to come in and just let you know what will be on. I know some of you may follow that along with that anyways, but it's always great to say to the public like one more time so people know. Anyways, in order, the propositions that will be on the ballot will be Proposition 1, Citizen Initiative to Hand Count In-Person Paper Ballots for Borough Elections. I have the whole thing here if anybody wants to look at it. That is one that was brought by the citizens, so it does go on the ballot. They, you know, the clerk did certify all that. Same with one that will come further. They're not together on here because it was approved late, but I will get to that one in a minute. The second proposition, Proposition 2, is ordinance 2025-17, establishing the Nanilchik Recreational Service Area. I know that's not in our district here, but I do think it's something significant for us to watch because I do know the talk around around town is that next year we may be looking at service areas for all pools. And they may be as one, they may be as separate. I've even heard talk of talking to the cities and seeing how the cities, if they wanted to take on some of the pools. So I do think it is something to at least be concerned about and be following. So that, I think just watching how the community reacts to this situation is a good one that we should watch for the city of Soldatna as well. Number three is residential property tax exemption change. That would change the exemption from 50,000 to 75,000 for all primary residents for people who live in the borough. So if you are under 65 and you own your primary home here, it would be $75,000 total. If you're over 65 and you have a primary home here, it would be $375,000 exemption total. And then there of course are other exemptions that you could qualify for. Number four is Proposition 4. Ordinance 2025-14, annually adjust the sales tax cap for inflation. Originally, this was every year to anchored CPI changing to the nearest dollar. I brought it forward and it did end up changing within the Assembly that it would it would add up for five years and then on that fifth year it would actually go into effect and it would be rounded to the nearest hundred dollars. Essentially, and you could look in our packet if you wanted to look at a graph of that from finance. Essentially, most five years, there's one like 20 years from now that's different, but it usually goes up a hundred dollars every five years. So in five years from now, if this passed, it would be $600, which in town would be, if if Soldatna also adopted it, I guess I'm making that assumption. If Soldatna didn't adopt it, it wouldn't, it would only be, what, $33? If Soldatna adopted it, it would be $36 cap. Oh, on that also is, it also got to where if you have rentals, rentals would would be frozen at the $30, $530. It wouldn't go up with that each year. And then the last one is Proposition 5. This came in late but did make the deadlines for what code says for a citizen initiative. And so it's citizen initiative, Proposition 5, changed the current election date to align with the State of Alaska election date. And it's basically what it sounds like it is, is it would be changing ours to whatever date that is in November and instead of being in October. And of course, that would not affect the city directly. We can't make the city do that, but it would indirectly, of course, affect the cities because we do all of our elections together at this time. So with that, one thing before I ask, if you have any questions, is for our district here, we have three people running. We have Serge Truesdale, Mitch, and I hope I'm saying his last name. Is it McCod? Mashaw? Michelle. See, I always knew that was the last. Mitch Michelle. And Nick Connor are all running for this district seat, which I think most of you up there are able to vote for. So anyways, watch that one. We have five seats available total on the Assembly. You will see a totally different Assembly next year, I believe. So if there is any questions on any of those, I can answer them to the best of my ability.
Sure. Question about the discussion on service areas to support pools, theaters, I'm assuming other recreational activities. I've long believed that we need to have some form of centralized recreational service area for the central peninsula, if not the entire peninsula. And I'm really curious to see where this discussion goes. Do you know, has there been a formal working group established or any any formalized structure behind investigating these possibilities moving forward? Or are they more taking a wait-and-see approach and kind of hoping there's community efforts in each each community to spur their own individual service groups, like what we're seeing with Soldovia and Nanilchik? I just like know if the borough is taking an active hand in helping cultivate a growth of these service areas or if they're just waiting.
That's a great question, and I don't believe so at this time. Nothing's come forward to the Assembly at least at this point. One thing, and the reason I know this is something that's being thought about, at least somewhat seriously, is when this came forward to us for Nanilchik, originally looking at this, the mayor put in a letter of his own that had three options on it. One of it was to pass this and move forward. One was to do nothing, and one was to wait until next year where we can look at a borough-wide service area. Now, I've been told two things on the borough-wide. One was that it would be the entire borough. Another one would be that since Kiskiari has their own that they would be asked. I've strongly opposed that personally, and that's just my personal opinion because if they're asking everyone else to be in one, I think it should be all areas of the borough. But that's just me.
I agree.
But again, that's just my personal opinion. It has not been discussed anywhere, but I hope that becomes part of the discussion of should everybody be involved in that? Or should it be selective on who's being involved and who's not? Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mr. Tucker. Was there any discussion in terms of the time on terms of the very first issue of paper ballots? How long would it, was there any suggested amount of time it would take before we'd have results of elections if indeed we went to paper ballots as compared to the current methodology?
In in our discussions, it was a short discussion about that. The clerk indicated that it would definitely take longer. She's not exactly sure how long, and part of that has to do with coming from these other areas. I know they've been in discussions with Matt Su to see how some of that's flowing. They're getting some information, but I don't know if it's if they're getting everything that they're looking for because some of the the information we're wanting is, I didn't mention earlier, is I believe Ms. Cooper has coming forward for us to allow monies to put towards both of these citizen initiatives for informational purposes. And what the informational purposes is mostly going to revolve around is that, is how much time and money is it going to take to do to accomplish both of those? Will it cost the borough is really what you're coming down to. And there is definitely a significant more amount of time that it's going to take to count those. I mean, because I talked to the clerk quite a bit, is there, people call and complain when they get results at 10 o'clock rather than nine o'clock when we close at eight. There is no way that you're going to get hand-counted ballots that quickly. It just is not possible. And so, and that's, you know, how fast could you get them even without error? If there's any error anywhere, and how many times are we going to count them? I don't know that this, when reading through some of their information, I'm not saying citizen initiatives are bad. I think sometimes though, it's hard to vet everything they need to vet as a as a citizen initiative because they're just not always in the same amount of information that you might be when you're on a council or an assembly. I think some of those things get missed. And so hopefully there's, if this does pass, hopefully there's enough areas in there that the clerk has to work with that. That that's my fear, is that some of this stuff gets locked in in a situation where it makes it very difficult, I guess.
Thank you for your service and thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, and you may not be able to answer this. If the the ballots, say, from Homer area for the borough, would they be counted there or would they be sent all the way here to the Kenai office?
I'm I'm not positive. I think there, though. I think that's how they were going to do them, was at each precinct.
Interesting. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Going going back in time in the early 70s when the state still counted ballots and I worked at the Division of Elections, each precinct counted their ballots and they would call them in. But going back to some of the, to the ballot propositions. With respect to the pools, does the borough have the authority to establish the area-wide service area for pools? Is that a recreational power?
Like this one is put in as a recreational service area? I'm I'm going to go out on a limb and say I assume that's the direction it would go. But as we've not been given anything, I don't know where that lies at this moment. Because we have not officially been given any information on that.
I know, I remember a few years ago when we looked at trails and trying to expand trails because the borough didn't have trail power. And that was on the ballot and was defeated. You still don't have trail powers. And then moving city elections from October to November. If that were to go into effect, what would be the effective date of that? Would that be in 2026, 2028?
I think they're all looking at next year for both of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your comments and the information that you provided.
And if I can, if there's a few of those questions that I wasn't very good at answering, I think are written actually on just the ballot summary. Some of those questions like on timeframes and stuff. Some of them are on these ballot summaries that are on the borough website, on the front page, go down to elections. But anyways.
Hopefully we see you at a meeting before your term is over. And thank you for your service.
Try and make one more.
Moving on to the next agenda item is public hearings under New Business, and we have none tonight. Next item agenda is Mayor and Council Reports, Mayor's Proclamations and Comments. Have quite a few things jotted down here tonight. We have a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will have an application here in front of the council next for one of the vacancies, but there still is one open, and that would be for an outside representative.
It can be. It depends on what they do on September 10. So there's two vacancies right now. Both vacancies can be filled by a resident. However, one of the people who is leaving is a non-resident property owner, business owner. So we have some flexibility.
So if you know of anyone's interested, have them contact the city clerk. The, I will be gone for the September 10 meeting. I didn't plan that, not looking at the agenda. I didn't plan that. That was a reunion. I didn't even pay attention to the dates. I have a proclamation to read here. Whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, through its constitution, stands as a patriotic order. And whereas the order upholds the ideas that the citizens of this nation live in freedom, won through great sacrifices and numerous tribulations that have laid the foundation for a free, prosperous, and independent life. And whereas we recognize that each generation must diligently work to preserve this freedom, understanding that through carelessness or indifference, the rights and liberties we cherish may be lost. And whereas it is both fitting and proper to honor this freedom and the nation that provides it, now therefore, I Paul Whitney, Mayor of the city of Soldatna, do hereby proclaim September 8 through the 14th, 2025, as National Patriotism Week in the city and urge all citizens to join with the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks in expressing gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship with appropriate celebrations and observances. I also issued a proclamation honoring the visiting President, National President, the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, who was here the last two days. He was actually on the Kenai Peninsula for the whole week, visiting Seward, Soldatna, Kenai, and Homer. And we had the opportunity that the city manager, Vice Mayor Parker, and myself in a meeting with Senator Sullivan here last week, going over some of the information in the bill that was passed by the federal legislature here shortly, a while ago. I can't remember if we did the grand opening before the last meeting or before this meeting. Kind of lose track of time. We've had so many things going on. But the Fieldhouse Grand Opening was a huge success. Thanks for everybody who was involved in that and helped and made that a project that happened, could happen. And I have one last thing to award here. And if Councilmember Chilson could step forward.
And you should be.
This is a certificate of advancement, Progress Days Hot Dog Griller Professional. This certifies that Jordan Chilson has successfully completed the Foundation Trials of Temperature Control, Fun-to-Dog Ratio Management, Condiment Fineness, and Crowd-Pleasing Charisma during Progress Days, and hereby recognized by the International Association of Hot Dog Grillers as a professional hot dog griller. In recognition of their sizzling spirit, unwavering dedication, and keen eye for the perfect grill mark, this individual is one step closer to becoming a master of the grill. Presented with relish on this day, August, actually, it was supposed to be August 4, but now it's August 25. Paul Whitney, President of the International Association of Hot Dog Grillers and Jeanette Bauer, Executive Director of the International Association of Hot Dog Grillers. Congratulations. You have been taken that position on a permanent basis.
I think this is going to be a peak political career activity here. I should just not run again.
I think that is the last thing I have on my list of stuff here. Well, next item is Council Reports on Boards and Commissions, August 6, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Ms. Whackler?
Well, my report's kind of small since basically what we covered was the motion to amend code establishing the annexation transition zone, which you guys should have in front of you. That motion was brought to Planning and Zoning to basically make the transition of if annexation occurs, how we would establish a already established zoning code for annexed areas so that we can spend additional time deciding what the code should be for that area. So basically, we already established one because we had in the code that it would have to be established within 30 days. This gives us additional time to be able to work on that code, get it all in detail. But you you see what those changes are. You already have it in front of you. The only other thing we I did not mean to do that. A motion to amend a CUP for basically, it was approved. We talked about one, a property that was being proposed with multiple multiple cabins, and they had concerns about a fish cleaning station. That was ultimately approved because the owner of that property said they they added a amendment that there will be no fish cleaning on the premises. So it was approved. The only other thing that was brought up in there was something that Commissioner Anderson actually brought up. He wanted me to talk to Police Chief about city roundabouts and there being a police presence or a possible informational campaign to better establish safety in roundabouts. And whether that's, whether or not that's something that we can do or how, we still do have residents that don't know that you're supposed to use your turning signals. I know that we can't just put up signs willy-nilly, but if there's some way that we could try to let people know they need to use turning signals at roundabouts, that was brought to you by Commissioner Anderson. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Whackler? I know we have had some educational announcements and stuff on the roundabouts back when they were originally instituted and then again shortly thereafter. But sometimes people forget, I guess we could put Kyle out there to direct traffic or Um, but sometimes people forget, um, I guess we could put Kyle out there to direct traffic or something in the, in the middle of one of them, but He may not want to, especially in January. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did um at our last department head meeting, talk about the roundabouts and um it was a good discussion. Full of laughter as well, but it was a good discussion and um a couple of things that um We know is that some people do not understand roundabouts. We did talk about additional education. Also that there can be more police present, presence, but we also know that people behave differently with police presence. So um focus on education part of it, and um we also know that some people Would love them to go away, but more people would like them to stay because they're, they are efficient. So we did have a good discussion about that. Another item that I do want to announce and um please to announce is that we've been working on the Little League slash Soldotna Rodeo Association Water line. That water line is in thanks to our city crews. Um, it is in, and as you know, Um, the next step in the process will be the two entities to hook into the water line, which we anticipate will be spring Unless, you know, the weather holds and they can connect this fall, but it is in. And um there'll be some more road repair, a little bit of road repair where the line went in, but the line is in. There is water there. Um, I also want to say thank you um to all of you uh attending the Fieldhouse Grand Opening as well as to the public. Um, it was a lot of fun, um, having the public in the building, seeing the children playing and the games and sports going on. Um, a lot of the field, uh, excuse me, the um food trucks also appreciated the business as well. So thanks to everyone for that. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Mr. Chilson.
Uh, just clarification. So the water uh line that went into serve both those uh organizations over there, Um, that work was done entirely in-house, was it not?
Yes, it was.
That, that was what I, I thought. I just wanted to confirm that, and I, I just don't want that to get missed. The fact that we have the capability and commitment with our staff to make that happen, and that was, that, that's very impressive to me. And I think our community is very fortunate because that probably wouldn't have happened or it wouldn't have happened at, uh, near the cost that it did Uh, if we didn't have the, that incredible team and to do it. So I just don't want that to go over. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further for the city manager? Moving on to the next agenda item are public comments. Are there any members in the public who would like to speak on any item? Anyone here in the audience? I see none, and looking at Zoom, there are no hands raised there. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is council comments. Mr. Chilson.
You caught me off guard tonight, but I had a great time. Look forward to it next year. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, we were uh The mayor, the city manager, and myself were in Upiavec Barrow for the Alaska Municipal League Um, Legislative Meeting in August. And uh, we were, we were fortunate to get there. Oh, and, and Kyle, I'm sorry, Kyle was there also. Uh, we were fortunate to get there because For two days, there were no flights in or out of Barrow due to the volcanic eruption in Russia that was affecting Flights. So there were flights for two days completely canceled and it Everybody was wondering, are they going to be able to get out in their scheduled time? Uh, people that were supposed to come and speak weren't able to speak. Um, it was a, a wonderful community event and It, one of the surprising things um was we had been told that As you're traveling to Upiavec Barrow, make sure you take plenty of food because there's not much food and You know, Alaska Commercial might not have food and the one, the other store that was there that shut down. And I have to say that the quality of food that we got At the conference for breakfast, lunch, and dinners was exceptionally good. Um, and uh, great, great comfort food for sure. And we also had the opportunity to observe the Barrow dancers, and the Barrow dancers are Considered to be the number one uh dance team uh In, in the Alaska Native community. So uh, if you ever get a chance to go to Kiana in Anchorage during AFN, go, go check them out. Um, they're, they're very, very good. It, the, the meeting was, was, was good, and one of the things that I came away with was In the North Slope Borough, one of the things that they do is they try to find ways to Collaborate between the borough, the native village, and the cities. And um, I developed a list of potential ways where maybe The city of Soldotna and the city of Kenai can continue to collaborate, collaborate and, and work together. So something to look forward to in, in the future. Um, moving to the Fieldhouse Grand Opening. What a, what a great day. What a beautiful day. Um, and the community, whether they live in Soldotna or the surrounding area here, are Very excited to have this facility um for future use. And thank you to the city and the city crews That came up with the idea for installing the water line in the area where we've had problems in the past. And I think with the initiative that this put in, putting this in, just shows that um When, as a city, we're presented with a problem, um, we find a way to, to deal with it and confront it, take care of it And move forward. So that's all.
Mr. Carey.
I start off by saying that I'm very pleased that, again, there was the good discussion about the roundabouts and And I would oppose making Kyle stand out on any of them. I don't think that'd be fair. Maybe a rotation type thing as a punishment for some, but definitely not Kyle. Okay, so you're safe.
I see the
Fieldhouse um uh reception was wonderful. And again, um Um, I'm just to continue to be overwhelmed by the amount of work that's gone in and the quality of what we have there. And again, having been there now a couple of times and walking through, it's just, it's a marvelous resource. Uh, certainly for our local community, but also for the state and even wider. And I appreciate all the people who have worked there and uh Um, the people that are going to work there for many decades uh providing service. The Riverfront Rezone, um, the work session that we had this afternoon was um very thought-provoking. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion uh building up to where we're at now. Uh, one of the things I uh interest in, in making sure that we keep in mind is the federal Uh, setback, again, from the river in terms of anything that we do, uh, and again, just how that will affect what goes on. Um, there was a lot of information mentioned. Um, I, I left much more unsure Of supporting what's uh before us than when I came into the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson.
No comments tonight.
Ms. Hutchings.
Well, I would also like to say thank you to the staff for all the work that went into the Fieldhouse. I mean, we have been sitting on committees for years. I know Jeff Delifka, I think he said, what, ten years, but It was before that, and uh I'm just happy that it came to fruition and it is such a wonderful facility. So thank everybody for all the hard work that went into it.
Ms. Wackler.
Ditto. Super excited about the Fieldhouse. Um, we've already had a bunch of fundraisers there. Looks like that's going to be another great resource for us. Um, I know that a lot of nonprofits are loving having access to that space. Um, the city's probably loving not having to cover ice at all. Um, love that everybody took the initiative to fix the water issue that's been causing Problems for years, and we're already on track. Boom. It's done. Love that. Um, yeah, and uh just super happy that I'm coming in at the very End of all this and being like, good job, good job, us. So, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the exact possession, and there is no reason for one. Um, pending legislation, uh, Ordinance is twenty twenty-five dash zero one five and zero one seven, Uh, which we had a work session on earlier, and those will be up for a public hearing on the September tenth meeting. Meeting announcements, uh, September third, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting at five thirty PM. And September tenth, twenty twenty-five, City Council Meeting at six PM. Seeing nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.